Perfect. All right, well, good evening, everyone. It's nice to see some of the smiling faces here in the room. It hasn't been, it's been a while since we actually have had an in-person meeting. So it's nice to kind of have some people around the room. And we're also joined online by some people as well. And so welcome if you're online and welcome if you're in the room here. It's April 28th and it's just after 5:00 PM. I'm going to call this meeting of the Board of Directors of San Diego Community Power to order. And let's do a roll call.
City of San Diego representative?
Joe Macawa, present.
County of San Diego representative? Imperial Beach representative? La Mesa representative?
Here.
National City representative?
Hupel Solis, present.
Chula Vista representative? Encinitas representative?
Here.
We have a quorum.
All right, well, let's, um, let's do the Pledge of Allegiance, if you will. Please join in the Pledge of Allegiance. And since we don't have a, oh, we have a flag. All right, so. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sorry, we were talking about the eighties, man.
We are joined by the representative from the city of Chula Vista by Sheriff Padilla. And also by the board member from the city of Imperial Beach, the great city of Imperial Beach, Charlie Swag.
I'm live, man, no filter now.
Thank you for being here. And so I just wanted to start off by saying thank you to our outgoing interim CEO, Bill Hardahan, who's in the back of the room here. Thank you so much. You know, it was, it was, it seems like yesterday that, that Bill came on. It was really kind of in a pinch. We needed somebody and Bill stepped in. He was in retirement. He stepped into that kind of, that, that job. And it's changed quite a bit over the last year and a half. And we really appreciate everything that you've done for this organization and taken it from a startup organization to where it is now. So thank you so much for everything that you've done. Also with us today is Karen Lott-Darson-Berns, who is our CEO, our current CEO. You guys, she introduced herself the last time and we'll have a few words to say later on in the agenda. Unless, of course, unless you want to say something else. All right, perfect. We also have a few other people that I want to introduce. First is Stephen Gunther. Stephen's back here. Thank you so much for joining the team. We also have Lorena Berneden. Thank you, Lorena, for joining the, the team. Where's Lorena? All right. And Rachel Pommel. Rachel is also new, new to the team and is joining us. So thank you so much. Let's, um, let's go to the agenda. Any changes to the agenda post-agenda? All right, do we have any public comments?
We do have one written comment. And it's a presentation for this regular general public comment as well.
And then there should be a member of the public who's going to read. Where we just commented, what was two?
And we have a hand raise. So I'll go ahead and read the one public comment that was received. That's worth reading. And it's from John Spinn. Thank you for taking on STCP board responsibility in addition to the multitude of others associated with your elected office. There is excitement about the opportunity that STCP presents for community members to influence the local electricity marketplace in a positive manner. As background, my name is John Spinn. I am a San Diego native, born in Milcres, raised in Imperial Beach, and have been residing in La Jolla most of my adult life. I am a 1985 BCSD Systems Engineering graduate, a clean energy entrepreneur, a consumer advocate, and to a lesser extent, a climate activist. As a goal and a hope is to contribute towards the shared vision of STCP, becoming a more competitively priced provider of clean energy. Towards this end, a significant amount of research has been done documenting, documenting the history of SDGME electricity price increases and comparing the rates offered by other utilities. Additionally, a review of the plethora of information posted on the STCP website is ongoing and near release. As Director of the Joint Power Authority oversees the community choice aggravation program, your responsibility includes providing strategic guidance and organizational course correction as needed. At monthly meetings conducted for the Brown Act and following Robert's Rules of Order, the public has an opportunity to interact directly with the board and community members. This public interaction is generally highly constrained and limited to providing brief oral or written communications, three minutes or four hundred words maximum. Core sense of communication with the board is available at using info@stcommunitepower.org. It was stated at a recent meeting that the public is welcome to communicate directly with STCP team members via email as well, using, using the following format. First initial, full last name, at stcommunitepower.org. STCP has been publicly sharing two visions with respect to setting rates. One vision is to introduce healthy marketplace competition against the former SDGME monopoly to deliver better prices for its constituents. The alternate vision is to act as a, as a, a lot of the probably set rates at essentially the same monocritical level as SDGME, reaping potential windfall profits for reinvestment in the community ostensibly vice-sempre to our shareholders. Note, SDGME theoretically does not profit on electricity generation. Any clarification or corrections the board would care to make, especially with respect to the rate-setting philosophy, would be valued. In practice thus far, the latter appears to be the vision. Additional comments on the, on the January 2022 board meeting will be provided in a separate correspondence. That concludes the written comment and we have one hand raise by Curtis Dowd. Curtis, you should be able to, I don't know. You should be able to.
Unmute, am I good?
You're good, you'll have three minutes.
Okay, I have a few points as Ms. Wuven and Mr. Uto understand I'm a very strong opponent of TOU, Time of Use, pricing for energy. And I have a few quick arguments. I'm presenting a written version of this. I just couldn't get it done by tonight. The first point I would make is that the original arguments for TOU as the utility, the IOU lawyers presented it, was, they were specious from the beginning. It was price signaling that would never work. That's my first point. The second point is that TOU is designed to save the IOUs from bad decisions concerning, concerning future, the future of renewables and thus their, their profits. The third point I would make is that TOU pricing has been ruinous to all consumers, not just solar consumers. The LA Times reported that 30% of consumers in California are behind in paying their utility bills. And I can prove mathematically that TOU pricing as structured today, even the TOU pricing that you're, you're using, is a destructive of all gains to adopting rooftop solar. And the fourth point I would make is, does STCP, San Diego Community Power, know the true cost of implementing batteries to dump cheap off-peak stored solar after 4:00 PM on peak rates are in play? I recently installed another array of my own solar and deferred installing batteries. After 20 years in solar, I had no idea what was involved in terms of cost and technology. My question to S- STCP is, do you understand? And lastly, my point would be that customer-centric or mirroring needs to be rethought and replaced by consumer education. I would agree entirely that maybe in the startup phase, you mirroring or what you're calling customer-centric pricing might be necessary to pull people in your direction. But at some time in the future, I hope you will consider removing TOU pricing from your schedules. It's just not necessary and it's very destructive. Those are my points.
Thank you. We did receive four slides from Dave Peterson. Was it for a general public comment that he wanted to speak?
As he.
As a hand raise. Here, I'm going to ask.
He was going to shoot on the slide.
Dave, you, you can unmute yourself and. Did you want to speak during general public comment?
How did you? Okay, I'm up. Good evening. Can I have the first slide? Hello? Can you hear me?
No, the slides were distributed to the board members. They have the board, they have the slides in their package.
The slides were distributed by hard copy to the board, so they won't be up on the screen.
Okay, I'll just go ahead and cover them. My name is Dave Peterson. I'm a retired engineer living in San Diego. When I read the presentation for the February 11th CAC meeting, specifically on page 17 titled Example Evaluation Summary, it seemed to me that there were four changes or additions that should be recommended to improve the summary. A version of these four recommendations was presented to the CAC on April 8th. A CAC member suggested that the Board of Directors might be of more appropriate form than the CAC. So here are the four recommendations for your consideration. Slide two. First, it's recommended that column four be improved by adding the designation SWG, et cetera, to the MW entry. So that you know whether it's solar, wind, or geothermal. If there's an energy storage component, it should also be added. For example, Viking, the Viking entry would have been 100S with 150 slash 600 added as well. Second, the evaluation should be quantitative as well as qualitative. Each, each cell should have a number for its score. The project score would be posted. And finally, all the column scores would be summed to provide the total project score. Third, because China has abstained from the UN vote on condemning Russians invasion of the Ukraine, the location where product, where the projects' panels or turbines will be manufactured should not be scored. The best score would be the, in USA, a lower score would be obtained for panels or turbines made elsewhere in the free world. And panels or turbines made in China should have a zero or negative score. Fourth, the amount of natural gas energy needed to make up for solar and wind deficiencies should have a column. The result would be expressed in metric tons of carbon dioxide. Slide three and four show an example of how the CO2 mass, CO2 mass can be calculated for a 50-megawatt mid-continent fuel, to wind farm. The calculation used Mid-Contin ISO, that's the, their independent systems operator, wind data from 214 is the wind model. I'm not going to go through the details. The calculation showed that this wind farm would typically require 76,000 megawatts of natural gas energy, electricity generated annually to make up for the wind deficiency. This generation will result in the emission of over 54,000 metric tons of carbon dioxide. Slide four also shows a summary of the calculation. This 50-megawatt MISO wind farm can be compared to a hypothetical 90-megawatt wind farm. This hypothetical solar battery farm located in Huthumbo would produce less, 40% less electricity annually than the 50-megawatt wind farm. But only 169 megawatts of natural gas.
Your three minutes have ended.
Would be required.
And if you could please wrap up.
Okay, the average car weighs two tons, so with a 10-year PPA, this weight.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson. I'm going to, um, your, your time is up. Thank you.
Thank you for your consideration and time.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson. Do we have any other public comment?
There is no other.
All right, well, thank you to the three speakers tonight. Very insightful and very good analysis. Let's move to the agenda. We have a consent calendar before you. We have seven items on the consent calendar.
Move ahead.
We have a motion by board member Alejandra Satel Solis. And a second by board member Rena.
Question on the consent calendar.
Sure.
Yeah, I just wanted to ask staff in terms of the engagement letter with PB and K. And, well, I guess beginning with that, just whether this allows this flexibility to sort of look towards hiring in-house counsel in the future if this locks us in.
Are you asking staff?
Yes. It does not. Okay. Great.
Yeah, at my read of it, it doesn't either. I mean, it's, it's, with any contract that we enter into like this, we can, we can, we can, we can stop, terminate the services whenever we want.
I just want to comment to, you know, preserve, I think now that we have our new leadership and our new CEO, to, you know, preserve maximum flexibilities. You sort of think about staffing your team and building out our team, so.
All right. Perfect. Any other questions or comments on the consent calendar?
And I'll just add that, exactly. Want, I want our new CEO to not have everything on her plate. You've got, uh, we certainly have enough for her to be able to ramp up. And thank you, Bill, for staying involved. But a year from now, you might want to look at things differently.
Yes.
Our CEO might want to look at things differently with no comment in particular one, but we support even consent calendar.
Perfect. Were there any specific things in the contracts that you saw that, that made it look like it wasn't something that you can terminate?
No, it looked good. I just wanted to, you know, for a point of clarification and making sure, you know, I was, I didn't miss anything. Because I think that's important, just important for you to have a sense of space as you move forward and thinking about staffing.
And it was certainly the friendliest agreement that I've ever seen in a law firm before.
Yeah. All right. All right, any other questions or comments? All right, let's move to both.
Director Gomor, how do you vote? Director DeDina, how do you vote?
Aye.
Director Macawa, how do you vote?
Aye.
Director Lawson Reamer, how do you vote?
Aye.
Director Satel Solis, how do you vote?
Hupel Solis, aye.
Vice Chair Padilla, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair Mosca, how do you vote?
Yes.
Motion carries with all directors voting yes.
Excellent. Let's move to the regular agenda, which first one item is item number eight, quarterly update on community advisory committee. And this is going to be presented by Matthew Vassklospis. Is he here or online? All right, Matthew?
Yes, thank you, Chair, and good evening, board, staff, and community members. Happy to be here virtually to provide this quarter's community advisory committee report. The last three months have been particularly busy for the CAC as we learned, engaged, and helps up the table for some important STCP projects, both complete and ongoing. In January, we provided recommendations on the CAC participation at the STCP board meetings advocated to be part of the CEO selection process, discussed rate settings, and provided feedback on the first phase of the residential rollout in Imperial Beach. In February, we learned more about the power procure process and received an update on the CEO search process, which later included a much appreciated invitation by the board to participate in the selection effort. And in March, the CAC welcomed four stellar new community members from the county and national city who are already helping to shape our agenda and providing valuable input from their communities to make STCP even more responsive and reflective of its many cities. We also participated in a Brown Act training, received an update on the seeking of search, received a presentation on legislative and regulatory affairs, and learned about STCP's legislative agenda. Finally, we voted to put Carolyn Schofield and I on the Community Power Plan Project Team to help shepherd the CPP moving forward. We look forward to providing other update in July and appreciate this time this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Matthew. Any questions for CAC? Rena, do you have any further comments? Rena is the staff person for CAC. All right. Well, there's no other question. Do we have public comment on this item, Meg?
There are no hand raised and there is no written comment submitted.
All right, well, there's no public comments going once, going twice. All right, we'll, we'll move on from this item. We'll go there. Yes.
Well, I just wanted to say, I, we had a nice visit with Karen and thank you coming to Imperial Beach with our two CAC members, Tom Summers and Anna Webb. And if you know, we have the coolest VW-driving electric car CAC member of all time, Tom Summers. So it was very nice. And just wanted to say, when I see this room, I realize how high level it is, like, just like it's so climate nerd and energy nerd that, but our CAC members, like, are there. So just as a throwdown for our board members, I really appreciated Karen taking the time to meet with them and they were really appreciative. And so, anyway, just, just to say that, thank you.
Thanks, Serge. All right, let's move on to item number nine, update on back office matrix and dashboard. Lucas? The only one wearing the STCP jacket? This is very fashionable.
Good evening, Chair Mosca and Directors. I'm actually going to provide, provide you with an update of where we are in terms of our Phase Three efforts as well as the opt-outs and the participation tracking that we've been doing. So I'm actually happy to let the board know that we have completed Phase Three Mass Enrollment for Imperial Beach, for La Mesa. We're currently proceeding with completing the Mass Enrollment for Encinitas. And then shortly thereafter next week, starting on May 5th, we will actually start enrolling residential customers in San Diego and Chula Vista. So, so far, everything is going rather smoothly. We've been able to involve the accounts of accounts that you're seeing in front of your screens. And as you all know, we are transitioning our net energy metering customers based on their true-up month. And so that process started in February and it's going to continue until January of 2023. And the emphasis of doing the massive moment that way is to ensure that customers are not inadvertently affected in terms of their true-up mechanics and their ability to be able to spend down the accrued credits as a function of, of being served under bundle service. Next slide, please. So in terms of our opt-outs tracking, and this is at a very high level, what are we hearing from customers? For the most part, a lot of our customers are opting out and they are giving us the reason of dislike being automatically enrolled as the reason for their election to opt out. That is the number one reason that we're hearing from customers broadly speaking. But when you actually dig deeper down into the residential and non-residential customers, you actually do see a little bit of a disconnect. In other words, residential customers do not like to be automatically enrolled. And that is the number one reason why they elect to opt out. With our non-residential customers, what we're seeing in the metadata that we've analyzed is the fact that they care more about the ability for us to, to be able to offer some sort of programs that SDGME has. It's not primarily, they're not likely to be automatically enrolled. So at a very high level, that is what the data is telling us. And we're using that data to tailor our approach in terms of being able to.
Finish your sentence.
Sure.
It, it, we're, we're using the data sets that we're seeing to tailor our approach in terms of our marketing, engagement, and, and, and education so that these customers can understand the value proposition and the benefits of being served in our, in our, in our service.
Personal is so helpful. Thank you, thank you. I just a quick clarifying question. What is the percent, and these are raw numbers. So what is the percentage opt-outs for residential and the percentage opt-outs for commercial?
That's an excellent point. In terms of the percentages, the next slide will actually address that. So please move over to the next slide. So, and sorry, I am actually having a run out of time seeing.
We all are.
I'm so used to having my, my laptop right in front of me. But in terms of our participation rates, as you can see, the bulk of our opt-outs are pertinent to the residential customers. So almost 81% of all opt-outs processed as of last week were residential, with the remaining 19% being non-residential.
Yeah, I remember when we first were talking about opt-outs and we were like, we had only launched the municipal accounts, the commercial accounts, and it was really low. And, and so some people would call us on that and say, well, you didn't, you haven't launched the residential. So it was, the commercial side was much lower.
But it's still, that's still telling me only the percentage of opt-outs that are commercial versus the percentage of opt-outs that are residential. I'm asking what percentage of residential are opting out and what percentage of commercial are opting out?
Certainly.
The denominator being like the total of the customers, yeah.
So in, in terms of the tracking by phase, you can clearly see that the charts on the right, the top chart, that is actually denoting our municipal and non-residential customers. So the participation rates that you see on that top chart, that is representative of non-residential customers. Whereas the bottom chart on the right-hand side, that is denoting opt-outs or participation rates in, by member city based on residential customers. So if you, and again, sorry, I can't, I'm, I'm trying to see.
So what are these, are the bottom of it, you can, they're the member agencies?
So, so Chula Vista, Encinitas, third is Imperial Beach, La Mesa, and then City of San Diego?
So those are participation rates.
Correct.
But those, it looks great. It doesn't look like it's, like, it just looks like the raw numbers for opt-outs of residential are higher, not percentages.
Correct.
Because you have a higher number of, a higher customer base. Like, that's telling us, like, you have 98% participation in the gray versus 97.09 in the commercial in the gray, which I don't know what city that is. But anyway, it looks like a fantastic, even though it's kind of a lot of people, but it's not very many. Like, 98% participation is amazing.
That is indeed what we're observing. But the one, the one caveat to this is with residential phase, it's still ongoing. And so we're not going to know our true participation rates until we've enrolled every residential customer, which, by the way, will occur after January of 2023. So right now, it's actually a moving target simply because even as mass enrollment is going on, customers are moving in and out. Premises are being closed, new premises are opening up. And so it's, 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 it's a moving target for the most part, but you're absolutely right. The participation rates for residential are not nearly as bad, generally speaking, because you do have a wider denominator.
I think you're underselling yourself. I think you're doing great.
We are. We, we, no, we are doing absolutely phenomenal. If I'm, we are.
Let's, let's finish the presentation.
Oh, okay.
No. Do the city on finish?
Yes. So on to the next slide, please. So what is the overall data telling us at a very broad high level? How are we doing? Which is the question that Director Reamer was asking. We are doing very well in the sense that our general opt-out assumption in all of our performer projections, et cetera, is at 5%. Our participation rate, generally speaking, is at 4.3% right now, which is absolutely great. In terms of the Phase Three participation rate, that's the point that I was trying to make earlier. It is a moving target because we are in the active mass enrollment status right now. The true participation rate will be determined after we complete enrolling all of our residential and Phase Three customers. In terms of what have we learned from what we're observing so far? We have seen that of, the bulk of our customers are electing to self-serve. So a lot of our opt actions, opt act, you know, opt-outs, opt downs, opt ups to Power 100, they are being performed through our website at 51%. And the rest of the customers are actually contacting our customer. So we're getting a lot of call volume. Customers calling with questions, customers calling to, to see if, you know, they can opt out or down, et cetera, which is definitely good. In terms of, you know, what that looks like from the opt-outs and what are the reasons driving customers' behavior? With regards to residential customers, as I alluded to earlier, they are opting out primarily because they dislike being automatically enrolled. And that is across the board for all member jurisdictions. Whereas if you were to compare the 25% of customers opting out because they dislike being automatically enrolled relative to non-residential customers, that translates to about 2%. As far as the next predominant opt-out reason for residential customers is rate or additional cost concerns. Whereas for non-residential customers, that stocks up to about 3%. So you do see a little bit of different, different driving points between the two customer groupings. And we are using this information to actually tailor our approach in terms of what Lee and I do from the key accounts perspective versus what we are doing as an organization in terms of approaching our residential customers. And for the most part, what we, what we're positioning ourselves to, to do so that we can be successful, not only in this massive moment and the subsequent massive moment for county and national city in the next year, is just MENO, which is marketing, engagement, and outreach. We were actually at La Mesa yesterday, talking to residents there, explaining who we are, what our value proposition is. And we are very grateful to all of our member partners utilizing their channels, their newsletters. And we are very grateful to all of our member partners utilizing their channels, their newsletters. Um, some of the uh, the communication channels, including some social media accounts, to actually let the residents know who we are. So that they can feel comfortable with regards to the changes that are coming down, down, down the line. Uh, and so that actually wraps up my presentation. I will stop here and see if there are any questions or comments.
Thank you, uh, thank you, Lucas. Great presentation. I like how you kind of wrapped it up to, to what we can do, you know, what the analysis says. Um, so it's really good presentation. Um, did you have any further questions, Board Member, last member?
No, that was thanks.
Board Member. Yeah, uh, great presentation, great work. Um, very excited about uh the messaging that we got out there and. People recognizing it, seeing the value of it. Um. So, looking at the backup materials, a couple of numbers caught my attention. I'm a little concerned about because the City of San Diego has had no residential rollout, right?
Not yet, not yet. However, we, we are required to notice customers sixty days prior to mass enrollment.
Sure. Uh, but it looks like for the City of San Diego. That the non-residential, there's around thirteen thousand nine hundred active accounts. And we have almost forty five hundred opt outs. Does that? That's, that's a pretty high percentage in the City of San Diego. Um, we need to do a better job of getting the word out there, uh, out there. This was all last year. Uh, is, is there a strategy or something we at the city can do to help kind of try to get back those forty five hundred or?
Yes, so I think my colleague Rita will be presenting in terms of what our, um, what our outreach efforts look like. But yes, we are starting to attend various um. Uh, community-based events in San Diego and Chula Vista. I think we've been doing that through our past enrollment this year. I think a lot of the board members here have seen us out there, uh, members of the C A C are out there. And the city um partners are also utilizing their um, their uh, their, their networks to. Either bring us on to present to city councils, et cetera, and I think that is actually helping in terms of. Um, possibly even getting customers who have previously opted out because maybe they didn't send what, what San Diego Community Power is all about. And these customers can come back to us because there really isn't a minimum stair requirement by S D G N E. If they opt out sixty days prior to mass enrollment or sixty days after.
I mean, I think we're, yeah, I mean, I think we need to kind of drill down a little bit more on that. Um, and I think this may even apply to national city as well. Because all, you know, commercial is not residential and why a commercial part, how you're gonna reach out to commercial property owners are different. Than, than residential. And we have to slice and dice that data because we may have direct access customers. There may be reasons why they're. Go ahead.
I think the numbers that you read may not be reflective of the actual commercial and the best of customers in the City of San Diego. Because we have a total of about seventy thousand accounts.
Yeah, didn't see, didn't feel right, so.
Yes, we could, we could check. I'm not sure what you're looking at. I'm trying to load, it's very slow here. Um, so we can confirm those numbers, but I don't think that, that comparison is quite right.
I didn't see it last month, and so this month kind of caught me by surprise, and I kind of thought, maybe that was actually what's helping.
That's a good point of thought, but I, but I also think that, like, one of the things that, that I've been curious about is how we reach out to these commercial customers. Because why they're gonna basically, that, as you said, the value, uh, um, the value equation is, is gonna be different for a commercial. Owner than a residential owner, and I think that there needs to be more individual kind of um meeting up with some commercial uh owners, especially large ones. And then when you look to national city, who has a lot of commercial, um, and has uh for the size of the city and, and. And has a, a lot of direct access customers. How do we actually reach out to those customers, I think is, is an important thing too.
And do we have, uh, I'm sorry, uh, information in terms of the size of the customer? Do we, you know, do we know whether they're very small? Businesses or major businesses, do you have that information?
Yes.
And then the last question I'll have is, there was some talk about us having the ability to reach out to customers. Either if they're opting out, speak to them, or to encourage them to opt up. Is that allowed? I, I, I know if there was a privacy issue, uh, whether the board members would be allowed?
That is actually allowed, so.
That is allowed.
Yes, it is. And, and, and we're doing that actively. Okay, I think um the good work that Lee Friedland on, 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 on our team has done in terms of getting. The Padres to opt up to power one hundred.
Yeah.
We are getting a lot of interest. Uh, we actually do have a few calls with some of the key, other key accounts in the region next week. To just try through their sustainability goals and how we can, we can help them realize tho- those goals by opting up to power one hundred.
And again, we would be happy to help to reach out to businesses in the City of San Diego, trying to capture some of the major economic sectors and stuff, so.
There, there is a confidentiality issue in advertisements room today who opted out, but you can work with people one on one and can we work through a list of key accounts. So that we capture the higher load customers and the core verticals, other commercial customers as well. So how do you work on that?
And I think one another thing, key thing that uh Mr. Hall was saying too, is that he's willing to help out. So like, so if there is a big commercial customer, you know, like a Padres or something like that, that he may have a relationship with, like. You know, Flock Freight and Encinitas, that we may have personal relationships with, absolutely, yeah, that's not, you don't want that.
Yeah, it's too bad the charges weren't strong with town, that would have been.
Thank you again for the presentation. And what I heard with the feedback that you've received is, don't tell me what to do. Um, and don't try to be slick about enrolling me. So when you come to national city, you heard it already. But I think it's, it's part of being able to say, we're not telling you what to do. We wanna be partners with you. In this effort, so I look forward to hearing what the communication message is going to be. Because uh, again, we're all, you know, wanting to uh get as many people and businesses involved. And we just have to have those three talking points that we keep hitting them over and over and over the head with. Uh, so that they can opt in. And it's good to know that we can actually get the ones that have said no to come back in. Um, so no is a no until sixty days after we close.
Sixty days prior or sixty days after?
Okay. I guess you know.
Vice Chair.
Thank you.
All right, thank, thanks, Chair.
Sorry, sorry.
Yeah, my question was asked and answered, but I just wanna, I think for me, with this sort of early raw data says that. There's an opportunity for us as an agency to think in terms of adaptability to what the feedback is telling us in advance as we enroll. It's great to have uh rate development as we enroll on board. And we'll ultimately to have a final uh percentage of overall accounts, true accounts or estimated accounts in each category. To know the total flat percentage, you know, of participation, but I think what's of value to us in, in real time is understanding. What are the primary drivers out of these different uh account holder categories as we enroll up? Can we adjust our column strategy? So I just wanna add, I think it's about column strategy here because we can maybe avoid a pattern as we enroll up. Uh, that we see or adjust in a way, and then clearly it all comes back to that. There's a lot of, you know, it's not a simple thing to explain to Joey, you know. On the street, right, about, you know, why the legislature decided and why the, what the rulemaking was and about opt in and opt out and the different. You know, they're gonna glaze over. I think it's just important to really think about how we tune up our, our column strategy and do it in real time.
Yeah, I, I mean, I don't even know that you have that conversation. I'm sure Rita's kind of uh wants to have a, have a conversation with us soon about this, but. Um, a night or two. Uh, but uh, but it's really about connecting on our values and talking about going back to. Climate action, going back to renewable energy, and I think that the, the, that the bulk of folks are really going to. Uh, want to be with us for that reason. And so it's, it's, it's communicating with them. They may not have heard about us, and I think. Um, you know, communicating on, on, on that level of our values is important. But also kind of saying that the opt outs are fairly low, uh, but uh Director.
No, no, I just wanted, I, I wanted to thank, you know. All the same, we are staff, and the outreach events in Imperial Beach have been really helpful, and I think, you know, they are small numbers, especially in a place like I B, but. That personal connection, so thanks, Reed. I know you're at, and your team were out in I B at a, at an electric bike event on the Bay Shore Bike Way, but also. You know, also thanks to our C C A C members who, the minute we had to roll out, then the trolls went on, you know, got active, and one of our members is. The guy you go to when you're gonna convert your old B W bus to an electric car, electric, and then the other one is a communications expert, really. She went to work with Rita, but in a very diplomatic, objective, non-emotional way on social media, sort of getting out the facts out there, and, and, and it helped a lot, so. Again, good integrated teamwork with the C A C and the staff and the board, so just wanna say, you know, I think we're in the right direction. It's all gonna matter, it's such a small level, and those personal connections. And, and, and on top, we communicate works on social media in an objective way, the media. And again, the brilliant Padres thing is, you know, that's, you're going in the right direction, so that's all.
That was brilliant. Did you wanna say anything about that?
What Padres?
Yeah, that was fun.
I think it was great to be able to help them put the switch and become a part of the Power One Hundred. And I think, you know, to have such a big name early on, I think really gives legitimacy to the organization. And I have to tell you, there's been people that have seen San Diego Community Power logo on the. Boards or the TrinaTron screen or whatever, they'll take a picture and they'll text me, they're like, we've signed the logo, what is it? And I'm like, oh, so great, they associated me with S D C P, so we gotta stay on the, stay on the good side.
Yeah, the energy of the field during that day was amazing. It was just amazing. Such a great partnership um that, that, that we've been able to form. And I know there was kind of like even I have a similar story where there's kind of a nasir um about renewable energy and uh clean energy. And after that, they, they saw me on the news, they saw those pictures, they texted me and said, oh wow, that's awesome. So on some level, they connected with us because of the Padres, and so it was a great branding. Uh, and any, um, Megan, any public comments on this slide?
We have one hand raised.
Let's recognize that person.
You know, and it's the logo from the natural, right? Remember the natural, where we read for its bath, the bath, and it's, it's, it's one year born. It's very, you know, any baseball nerds here know.
Oh my god.
Think about it.
Yeah.
Anyway, this, yeah, there you go.
Good catch.
Okay, just.
Curtis, and you should be able to unmute yourself, and you'll have three minutes.
Yeah, um, I'd be very interested in knowing why people are opting in. Um, because uh obviously renewable energy is going to sell uh itself. But how long are people going to stay if the tariffing is not producing. Uh, gains that they can count on, uh, renewable energy or not renewable energy, so. It's great that you have such low percentages of opting out and basically people who feel that they're being forced. Um, uh, that's understandable, you can kind of write that off. But long term, it seems to me that you need to really drill down and get. A, a very detailed understanding of why people are really opting in and what they think about that. Wh- what do they think about renewable energy? Do they, do they actually understand where it's coming from? Do they understand that it's coming on utility wires versus on rooftops? I mean, there's, there's a whole. Um, um, uh, book to be written on that, and I hope in the future we'll, we'll go there.
Thank you, Curtis.
I, I don't have anything else to say.
Megan, is that it?
So is it?
Any other public comments?
There's no other man's phrase.
All right, we'll bring it back to the board. Um, any other public comment on this slide? So this was a receiving file. Thank you so much.
Wait, there's one more logo thing. I'm unsullied, so it doesn't matter. Jerry Lopez, the ball, lightning bolt, right? Like, so we have to do logos. From the natural, Wonder Boy, and Jerry Lopez, or any pro dude that's at the stadium, they're subliminal. So it's brilliant.
All right, sorry. This is not gonna actually.
Hava knows what I'm talking about. Wonder Boy.
Look at, that's the best.
I'm gonna try to.
So I was like, send the Dina back to Zoom.
Moving on.
Let's move on to item number ten, update on regulatory legislative affairs. Uh, Laura Fernandez, we haven't heard from her in a while, so thank you for presenting today.
Hi, pleasure. Keep the heck of staff reports full uh for you to present today. There's quite a lot going on in the regulatory environment, so we'll go ahead and get started. Um, in the integrated resources planning proceeding, we have this issue that's taken up a lot of time. It's called the modified cost allocation mechanism. So I know you're all gonna fall asleep now, sorry about that. Uh, so to give you a little bit of context, back in twenty nineteen, the C P U C ordered thirty three hundred megawatts system resource adequacy. This was R A that was supposed to be procured by load serving entities that were serving load at that time. And the C P U C said it would address cost recovery and other issues associated with it, like R A credits and a future decision. They kind of kicked the can down the road that would establish this modified cost allocation mechanism. We love it, we call it IN CAM. Since we weren't serving load yet, we weren't assigned procurement obligation, and we are left in this weird gray area because. We were neither assigned this procurement nor to be opt out and decide to have S D G N E procure on our behalf because we didn't exist yet. Which was the other option that was afforded to load serving entity that were existing at that time. So for the last year, we have been really pushing this issue of C P U C meeting with staff, filing motions, holding up party meetings. Um, because it's potentially a lot of uh R A for us, and we've been trying to get clarity regarding whether we would ultimately be procure. Be, be assigned part of this allocation or not, because we need to know for our portfolio, are we gonna get some of these resources or should we just fill it on our own? So finally, after over two years and us pushing a lot, last year especially, with the help of our regulatory council, thank you, Kai and his team. Uh, we finally got a proposed decision on this issue, and if this decision was upheld as is today. S D G N E would be required to contract with us for about a hundred and thirty five megawatts starting next year. This is a lot of R A, so it's a really good outcome for us, and so we filed comments in support of the decision. Um, and we also asked for some clarification regarding how it would work. Unsurprisingly, uh, the I O U's are very opposed to this one-time allocation. So we're trying to our best to push back and keep the decision the way that it is right now. It's still a proposed decision, but it becomes final as early as next week, so. I'll keep you all updated on that. Next slide please. So in the resource adequacy proceeding, there's a lot happening. There is two main proposals in the reform track. There are noted as the two slice and twenty four slice proposal. The two slice proposal is sort of similar to what we have today, which focuses on breaking the day into two slices. One is the gross peak load and the other is the peak net load. And so last month, we filed some comments with some other C C A's on what they call the future of the resource adequacy working group report. And basically, it's gonna be potentially really big changes to R A. But in these comments, we argue that our current challenges, where we've seen blackout in the last couple of years. The, and the midterm reliability challenges can be met with the two slice proposal. Um, and so that's kind of really our preferred proposal because it's more readily implement, more readily implementable. And it's also a more transactable proposal, so we emphasize that, you know, that's our preferred proposal along with those other C C A's. Um, but if the C P U C ultimately chooses other framework where you're looking at twenty four slices in a day. That there's some transact, transactivity challenges that need to be addressed. And so we're waiting on a proposed decision in that proceeding, which we're expecting as early as next month. Next slide please. In the provider of last resort filmmaking, the C P U C is considering a monitoring process for identifying at-risk C C A's and addressing, addressing financial issues. That will minimize the risk of a large scale failure. And so this is, you know, there's some fear, I think, around what's happened with. Um, other C C A's that have wound down their operations, bankruptcy of Western Union Energy as an example, I think is kind of driving some fear around this proceeding. So in comments that we filed last month, we noted that the C P U C should consider the potential impacts of certain proposals on load serving entities. We noted that while this proceeding is intended to mitigate the risk of a potentially large return of customers. To the provider of last resort, that certain proposals would actually have opposite effect. Because if there were large financial obligations coming from um some of these proposals, it could. It could present a material and highly volatile risk for financial risk for load serving entities, which could be difficult to manage. So this is still an ongoing proceeding, evidentiary hearing, some brief things will take place later this year.
Could you just elaborate a little? Why that certain, why would certain proposals create increased financial pressure?
Sure. So right now, we have a requirement to post a financial security requirement, well, F S R. It's sort of um a bond, which I believe is a letter of credit, here, I have to confirm, and that amount right now is a hundred and forty seven thousand dollars. And so there are some proposals to change that to be a minimum of five hundred thousand dollars. And there are other proposals which could increase our posting potentially even beyond that. There's. Yeah, potentially millions of dollars. So if we had to have a letter of credit that had, you know, that was kind of holding billions of dollars as the. Money that we couldn't be using for other things. I see Eric nodding, this was a good sign, as I weighed out of my air difference duties.
Got it, sure.
Any other questions before I move on? Okay, next slide please. So moving out of regulatory into legislative, um, there is a bill that we took in opposed position on last week. This is a bill sponsored by S D G N E. So S D G N E is always arguing that we need to maintain rate parity difference. But when it's merit interest, they are willing to turn that principle on its head, and that's what's happening with this bill. So as a little bit of background, existing law requires the investor utilities to administer what's called the Clean Charge Share Renewables Program. Here, you've probably heard of the program called K E O Choice. So this program enables rate pairs to participate in off-site electrical generation facilities that use renewable resources. Um, existing law also requires the C Q C to ensure that charges and credits associated with these programs are set in a manner. That ensures that those who are not participating. that ensures that those who are not participating uh do not have to pay the cost of these programs. So that would be customers who are in remaining bundled service, direct access and community choice aggregation customers. But this bill would allow termination of these programs and also allow for the CPUC to consider recovering outstanding program costs with all customers, including other bundled customers and including CCA customers. So we've taken an opposed position on this bill. Um, it passed out of appropriations yesterday, but we're going to continue to engage our legislative delegation for it.
Yes, question.
Yeah, I'm looking at the analysis and um when it was in front of committee in February, there was no registered opposition. Um, I'm looking at the post, the approach, it's stable, two and zero, no votes. What's coming?
Yeah, um, I'm surprised too, since when this bill was introduced, it it basically completely inverts the original statute. So when I saw this bill was introduced, I was like, wow, that's that's really surprising. We talked with our trade association about it.
Oh, you're the first to register opposition or have it?
We might be the first.
Once we move to the other. Sorry, you know, I just want to make sure before I we get, there's a lot in this order and I appreciate your work. And by the time you finish your report, I'd forgotten my question. Make sure I get it. Thank you.
I mean, I think that also begs the question in terms of like, what are we doing? When we, when we say we're going to oppose or or um or in favor of a bill, um what are we doing to back it up? How are we communicating with our delegation? You know, and and what are we doing, you know, up in Sacramento to kind of make sure that a bill that that is not the same with our values and we're hurt us, um that we're defeating it?
Yeah, so to date, we've been relying on our trade association, CalCCA, because we've not had our own lobbyists. But we did put out a lobbyist RFP and we expect ever contracts to be placed soon for our own lobbyists who will be helpful with things like this. Um, yeah, we, in the CalCCA Legislative Committee, we analyzed this bill over a month ago and the the committee decided to take an opposed unless amended position. But as of last week, the CalCCA still had not sent a letter. I think that they still haven't sent their letter. They might send it soon. Uh, but when we realized that, you know, we felt there was going to be a little bit more action on their part and they hadn't done anything yet, is when we decided to get out in front of this um and send our letter for the appropriations here.
Right, you're awesome.
Yeah, I just had a couple of questions and kind of better understand. Um, you know, I under, I clearly understand that the, that this bill would flip the incentives, right? That I understand. Um, but it's not clear to me that that's a good thing or a bad thing. I mean, that there, I, that I think is the question I have. I mean, you know, if you're asking non-participating ratepayers to sort of to shoulder some of the cost of uh renewable energy programs, you know, I don't, I think that's a policy question that like had, there's like a pros and cons. And I think you could like delve into both sides of, right? Like, you could see that there might be reasons that you would want to do that in order to like incentivize more folks to join renewable programs. So you don't create like a cost differential. You might argue that that's a bad idea because people should have the choice to choose. So I think it just, to me, this seems not as clear cut, just because it's changing old policy, doesn't mean it's bad. It, I think, is the question, the thing I'm putting, the the point that I'm making. Again, I'm not saying it is good. I don't know. Um, it just does not seem clear cut to be like necessarily against uh our values or necessarily bad from like what we're trying to accomplish here at San Diego with new power to to shift this. And so, you know, um, I think, I guess, I mean, maybe it's a question for Cody, but I I think I'd like a little more information about why would this be, I mean, yes, clearly it changes incentives, but why is it like that?
I think the the bigger issue for us on this particular bill is the rate pair indifference issue. So we've fought long and hard and so far we've sort of lost on the rate pair indifference issue from Peter Paul SB 612 last year, which was an issue all of CalCCA fought to better preserve rate pair indifference. So if we're paying for something, our customers should receive a benefit. That was a longstanding principle that CPUC fought of the uphold. Uh, and this and the IOUs and the SDGNE part to maintain that principle. Now this completely flips the razzies. Well, when it benefits us, we want to actually undo that and go in the right direction. And this program was an opt-in program. So customers were choosing to join in. And uh we can go into a lot more detail about why.
She's going to join into the renewable program.
Yeah, yeah. And so then when other customers start departing, instead of managing the portfolio better, uh, the customers that were left there were left holding the bag. And then now they're all departing. Uh, the utility wants to actually recover the cost from everybody. Uh, so there's a lot of, there's a lot of nuance to this that maybe you know, it leads with you on, but uh it's the principle of rate pair.
I mean, I think the the reason I'm fixated on this is because everything you just said made sense up until the idea that it's individual ratepayers who are getting the benefit from being a member of a renewable program. I would argue that we all, as a society, gain a benefit from people using renewable energies. Those are like valuable externalities that are generated for us as a whole. It's not like a rate pair program where you get like, uh, you know, more energy or whatever, better billing cycles. Or, you know, like, there's a lot of things that accrue and that you pay for, right? Like, uh, when you talk about rate pair, of course, you don't want to like cross subsidize if someone's getting better service, they should pay for that better service. But when we're talking about renewable energy portfolio, that is a social benefit with like widespread externalities that we all like share the benefit. It is completely different than you're paying for better service.
Right. I I think personally, I tend to agree with you. However, this is a program that was not accessible to everybody. So not agreeable set of things in the program. So there's a lot, there's a lot of nuance here that I think we agree with your philosophy, but the rate pair difference is what's what we're stuck on here.
Yeah, right. So why don't we just have two more comments on this specific item? Because I don't want to run into a problem with legal counsel as to an item that is not necessarily on our agenda. Uh, but we could put it on the agenda so that we can have discussion.
We don't need to. I think this just kind of hits home to me, the idea that at some point, and it'll happen over the next many months, we should do some work on what are our policy and regulatory priorities and principles so that you all have that guidance. And, you know, we don't need to get in the weeds on this. I'm done. But I think this just hits home that you all are going to need that guidance.
Why don't, why don't we do this too? Uh, we, we, um, I think we put together our legislative priorities. What is that?
We actually adopted that last time.
Was it last month? Let's, let's bring it back at a future meeting and discuss that and maybe um discuss this bill as well. Uh, vice chair, uh, sorry.
I'll just say one quick comment. Uh, you probably already know this. I was in ECO Choice until I put solar in my roof. SDG lobby essentially lobbying to quit. Because he said it's going to get really expensive really fast, better get out now kind of thing. So if they have any leftover costs, because we're encouraging their customers to leave, so.
And yeah, and if I can just add quickly, so there's at least a couple million dollars of uncollected costs that we know of.
Right.
Um, and these are costs that should have been recovered from customers when they were in the program, but SDGNE didn't collect them. And now those customers have left.
Right.
So there's a little bit of mismanagement going on, as I understand it.
Right. Vice chair, do you have?
Just briefly chair thing. No, I'm not, I mean, I think it's juicy, but I mean, it's not a gem dice for action, but I think it's probably important for discussion. It's a part of, it's a component of the gem dice. Like, that said, I would just say timely, it's important to understand that they've got the easier argument. And I might explain why there's no opposition even when legislature is serious questioning. And it's very simple. I mean, the authors, their argument simply is the nature of procurement shifting.
Right.
We have departing load, SDGNE 60 something plus percent by June of this year, uh, right? It's their estimate. Um, and it's a regulatory, um, you know, it's, it it it's a, it's a statute that says they don't have the power to terminate the program. So we're just going to give them that power. Seems very reasonable and innocent. And it's probably why folks are not really understanding some of the downside of the bill. So, and I think that's more about something we should understand like more quickly than later as that, that's all.
And I think also like maybe like how, when we have our legislative priorities, what the process of taking a position on a bill is. And so, because I think if we basically, maybe if we had brought this back, um, we said, okay, this is within our priorities and just had unconsent calendar on the regular agenda item, uh, uh, calendar, perhaps we could add that discussion and just make sure that we have a check in report. Maybe that's kind of a learning lesson. Maybe we just kind of have more process around how we take positions and so that we're kind of checking in. And then just even a strategy of how, if we're going to oppose it, how we're going to basically oppose it. So, direct to the comment.
No, I, I didn't mean to speak, but I, I, I think your point is well taken. I was thinking about whether you could send out to the board, here are the bills and just the position we're taking and we can let you know uh whether this is something that deserves full or discussion. So. Because I, I don't think we want to get into your hands every day. Yeah, because I do it boost pretty fast.
We could, we could be at the beginning of a legislative session, basically just identify all the bills that we want to oppose or um that we're in favor of and then just bring it back on one agenda and just have a discussion. If some could be on consent calendar and some could be kind of for discussion because we're not sure, you know, where it lies with these priorities. Yes.
Thank you. So I was, uh, I kind of asked the same question of how, how do we position ourselves? And you mentioned it earlier, it's the trade association that gives us kind of heads up on pieces of legislation that we follow, correct? And how often do they provide updates?
We have weekly meetings.
So I wrote the same thing, when and how um do we, you know, take positions? And I think as a board, having just learned that we have an RFP out for a lobbyist um is a yellow flag, is not a red flag. But anytime we are looking to bring somebody on board to be our legislative voice, whether it be at the county, state, federal level, it's really important that we capture what our legislative platform is. If we have not done so, I think as a board, and I know we have a retreat, so there's going to be an opportunity for that. But I think CCA has a nuance statewide as a trade association, but we're San Diego. We are this region, so we have a unique voice. So I would say maybe, again, not moving into a different item, but it just something to consider internally because that's above our pay grade. But whenever there is something that does eventually have to come and get an ask in the budget, we should know that we are seeking that um lobbyist or something of that nature.
Yeah, to carry that voice. If I respond, sure. The legislative priorities were adopted as part of the consent agenda last month and those were included as part of the RFP for lobbyists.
Good.
All right, good.
Any other questions?
That, uh, Nicole.
And there was another question on the first item that you presented.
I'm sure.
If we go back to that slide, that would be.
IMCAM, everybody's favorite. Yep. All right, next one.
We're glad that this is your favorite.
Um, yeah, so IMCAM proposed decision, it requires us to enter an agreement with SDGNE for, for our precious. Why can't we procure our own resource reserves?
Uh, this would be a better question for our Director of Power Services. We could, but I think it's, it's a very difficult RA market, which is probably why SDGNE is biting tooth and nail for us to not get this one time allocation. Um.
Yeah, hey, hey Laura, I'm, I'm here. I can jump into this, Byron.
I don't know. I don't know, just procedurally proper, proper.
Is it?
I would love to phone a friend if this allows.
Briefly, because if we could go down a rabbit hole with this one.
Yeah, yeah, we'll, we'll not, we'll try not to get too far in the, the IMCAM details. But Laura summed it up. Um, you know, a lot of this procurement just was done on our behalf. Um, so it's kind of only fair that, that our customers get the credit that was um for the, for the, for the capacity was purchased again on their behalf and the cost that they'll be bearing, um, uh, you know, as they transitioned to our service. So we are still doing a lot of procurement to, um, you know, procure our own resources and our own reserves. But as uh we'll be having, our customers will have to pay for a lot of these resources as well. Uh, it only makes sense that the, uh, you know, kind of resources follow, uh, follow them from SDGNE service to our service, uh, as the cost will as well.
Got it. So actually, a better way of phrasing this would be require SDGNE to enter into an agreement with SDCP for, to allow SDPCP to purchase our share of the resources. So that's really what this is about.
That, that's correct.
Very similar to the legislation that was pending in Sacramento or it was defeated in Sacramento about, you know, what part of their portfolio, the IOU's portfolio, when, um, should, should the CCAs get? Because, you know, our repairs will pay, are paying for it. And so.
But at some point, this is sort of a, for a, a certain period, set period of time, at some point, we will need to procure our own resource.
And we are.
We are.
This is, this is just.
Byron, what percentage, what percentage are we talking about of RA?
Um, Laura mentioned the number we estimated would be about 130 megawatts. Um, so that's kind of, um, you know, our, our share of the procurement that was done um to be online in, in 2023. Um, so rough, rough numbers, I mean, 10, 10% maybe of our RA. Um, so it's, it's sizable, but you know, we'll, we'll be doing plenty of our own purchasing around that as well.
And then as we move out in subsequent years, when will it diminish to zero?
Uh, these contracts, I don't have the terms. They're o- over 10 years at least. I think some are 15 years. Um, so this would be kind of a, you know, a, a commitment for a while. Um, but it'll, it'll, it'll decline as the contracts roll off and potentially as, as we grow, the uh, the denominator gets larger as well.
Thank you. Thank you. It's so, super helpful.
Yeah, my pleasure.
Thank you, Byron.
We have one hand raised. Um, Curtis Dowd, you should be able to unmute yourself and you'll have three minutes.
Uh, yes, I just did. And I want to congratulate the lady in blue at the end of the table who I don't know. Uh, who, who, who stole my thunder, uh, because basically she's an externality lady. Uh, as many, two of you at least know, I have a PhD in natural resource economics from Berkeley. And one of the things that gets overlooked time and time again is the social costs of carbon. So, um, I like the idea of uh essentially attacking um SDGNE for the social costs that they're in uh uh creating as a defense. Um, uh, for one thing. And then the second thing I wanted to ask was, and I don't have the number of the legislation in front of me. I think it was AB 23 something or that is, is that a backdoor way of attacking net metering from another perspective? Uh, that's a question. I, I don't really, I don't have the answer. But I do know that the entire thing of cost recovery is centered around the question of externalities and how you measure them. So have somebody on your team who really knows how to do that. That's all I got to say.
Thank you, Curtis. Did you, uh, anybody want to take a stab at that? I don't even know what legislation that was.
We're talking about 2838. It's, it's not about energy meter.
All right. All right, Curtis. Thank you for the question. Um, let's move on to, uh, if there are no more questions or comments for Laura, we'll move on to the next item. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Laura. No, it's a receiving file. It's a receiving file and Rita De La Fuente, what's up?
Hi, everyone. Rita De La Fuente, External, uh, Director of External Affairs. I'm here to ask, give everyone an update on our PR and marketing um strategies for our current enrollment. Uh, I feel like for Imperial Beach, La Mesa, um, and Encinitas, we've had a really successful engagement campaign. I want to thank the board. I want to thank my fellow coworkers, our city staff liaisons have been great. I especially want to thank our CAC members. Their um voices have been very strong during residential enrollment. They have helped us reach out to different um areas and different communities. And they've um definitely extended our voice on social media and, and otherwise. So special thank you to our CAC members. Uh, so now we're gearing up for May, which is, uh, as everyone knows, our biggest uh month of enrollment for uh San Diego and Chula Vista. I just quickly want to share with you our concepts um for our My Reasons campaign. And um these are local community members and business leaders. They, these ads will be seen in English and in Spanish on Twitter, Facebook, Instagram and Nextdoor through June and region wide digitally um on display through July. Next slide, please. This is a reminder of our media mix. Uh, so we'll also have a presence in publications, including Spanish, Tagalog, Chinese, Vietnamese, also smaller community publications. Uh, radio ads began, began in April and will continue through July. We'll also have billboard advertising and convenience store posters, um, which will be new for, for this month. We'll have a billboard in Chula Vista as well as downtown San Diego. Next slide, please. Uh, we had a huge week last week, a lot of good news um with the announcement of the Padres and Sharp opting up to our Power 100 level. Um, so as I mentioned to the board before, we've learned that this is where we get our highest level of engagement. So we're going to continue to look for ways to amplify our partnerships as we build them. We talked earlier a little bit today about how we get um businesses uh to opt up and to become our partners and. And just last week with these announcements, it's really ignited some, some other interest. So I think that there's, um, other businesses that don't want to be missed, be missing out on the action. So we'll have a lot more of partnerships to be able to share. And these also help with our residents, um, because it builds that level of trust. So important for both resident and commercial. We're also engaging more and more with our EDCs and chambers, and they're helping us, um, to build these partnerships with other businesses, get our name up as well. Next slide, please. We've had great media coverage, uh, I highlighted one of our headlines for the UT. This goes back since our enrollment started in, uh, residential enrollment started in, in February. UT has published sixteen articles on us alone. Um, we've had over a hundred individual articles, uh, various publications since February. And we've had a broad mix of newspaper, TV, radio, online news outlets, Spanish news media. Um, and then as we, um, have these articles on the, uh, mainstream media, the community press is also picking it up, so we're also able to target the hyper-local markets. Next slide, please. And then for our, uh, community engagement, I wanted to just touch on what Director Dedino was saying. I, this has been so effective and so important, even if we're only, um, reaching a small group of people at the events, what we're doing is building ambassadors, and those people are our voices, they're talking to their neighbors, they're talking to the people at the grocery store. So it's really important, and it's been all hands on deck, see, uh, Chair Mosca there, he was talking to some folks in Encinitas. So it's, it's been very important, and just to go back to our conversation when Lucas was presenting about, you know, people don't like to be told what to do, and that's the number one reason that people are opting out that we're seeing. And what I've noticed is being in front of people and reminding them that this is about choice, and we believe in choice, and you can opt out any time, and actually by reminding them that you can opt out any time actually diffuses that, makes people step back a little bit, and, um, so I think we just have to, um, share that, these key messages around. And that's all I have for this, for this report, because I don't know how many questions.
I did want to say that, that kudos to you and Cody and our team, because I think like when you look at the articles that we've gotten out of San Diego, Union Tribune, and then even some of our local papers, I mean, it's not easy to understand the energy landscape. And then layer on top of that, a Community Choice Energy Program, and I find like some of the writers, you must spend inordinate, inordinate amount of time with them, because they just like write these articles that are like almost gifts to us. So it's, it's really nice, uh, and so thank you for all the work that you've done, because I know that it's not, especially dealing with some local papers, it's not easy to explain it, uh, and for them to kind of get it right. You know, so many times there are several articles, I mean, I didn't even, like, I pushed out on social media, I didn't even have to say anything, I'm just like, read this, it explains everything, you know, so.
They have been really thorough and, um, and fair, I believe, and since you mentioned it, I also want to shout out to Karen, because you've already done five interviews, or four or five interviews, so. And it's, and it's really the best way to do it, is through a conversation, is to be able to tell the story, have questions asked.
Yes. Director, so tell us, please.
Thank you, Chair, uh, and I just want to say kudos. I mean, there has definitely, and even in Spanish language, um, the media is starting to slowly pick it up, and so yay. From the prior conversation about enrollment, as part of the rollout, are we looking to have a team to follow up on the nose? So those folks that are like, ah, maybe not, and then they decide to opt out, are looking to target them?
When you say target the people who have already opted out?
Said no, because we have the sixty days after, and sixty days before, sixty days after. Think about this as a campaign.
Right.
We're gonna take that as a maybe, because maybe you didn't understand, or maybe you didn't get the right information. Is that part of our?
I might have to turn to my, my colleague Lucas on that, is that something we can do once they're not in our service anymore? Okay, so that's a really good point.
Yeah, we, we, we can actually call, yeah. I apologize, but yes, so we, we can reach out to customers who have opted out, um, within the sixty day, prior to national enrollment, or sixty days after national enrollment, and essentially explain to them the benefits of them participating in our program. So right now, obviously, the primary focus is making sure that customers are enrolled, the ones that, um, are scheduled for enrollment. And then, yes, we will definitely go back, um, and make some outbound calls, perhaps, to just try and engage those customers and see if they'll be interested in coming back.
Yeah, I just know that the conversation was, you know, we don't know, well, we do know, they were told what they, what to do. They didn't like that, but I heard Rita also say, once we told them it's an opt-out, and yeah, they did opt-out, you, you had that power, but this is what it is. Again, I'm all for low-hanging fruit, get the ones that we know solid, boom. But if we can, as part of our longer term, sometimes those ones that get lost are lost because they didn't get the right information. And so as part of our marketing, you know, is it going to be something that we target? If not, or do we just say bye, we said no, we don't want you, next, or just something that we consider.
And I, I think how we answer this question too, the order number is like, do we have the bandwidth to do it? So I think right now, we're focused on San Diego and Chula, making sure that we're enrolling as, you know, we have, we're enrolling them, and that is, that there's no problem there. Uh, and so if we have the bandwidth, obviously we want to, we want to, you know, try to get back folks that may have not, uh, thought about us before, but we need to focus on San Diego and Chula as well.
Yeah, I, I'm gonna look at that too, that's, that's a great point, with what we're kind of doing, and I think what Lucas is saying a little bit is, commercial industrial customers, we approach one way, they're bigger load and more impactful from a load perspective. Residential customers, we approach a different way, and we're hoping that a lot of the education and outreach that we're doing, is either gonna capture them now, or they're gonna see how well we're doing, and could let our, our actions be for ourselves, and they'll come back to us. We don't have the bandwidth to go after every single residential account, because it's just not possible yet, but we, we hope that people will see and trust us, and they'll trust. So that's kind of how we're approaching, and, and I do want to reiterate that our, our, I prefer to say our participation rate rather than our opt-out rate, participation rate is fantastic.
Yeah.
So, uh, you know, ninety-five percent above is fantastic, and, and we want to, we're kind of focusing on that while we're focusing on rolling the best words we do have, and then do it in the sleep of how we get more.
Perfect.
And the majority of our energy load are among the commercial property business, the businesses. And so to, to the extent we have some large business that, that for some reason said, we're gonna decline SDCP, if we have the bandwidth, we definitely want to go, go after those loads, yeah.
Okay, thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Any other, um, questions or comments? So one lesson learned from IB, Encinitas, and La Mesa, that we're gonna apply, that we think we can, we can kind of look at and apply, you know, a solution to when we look at San Diego or in, uh, Chula Vista, because, I mean, I know that there are multiple reasons why we did three tranches, but, but one of them being, you know, the customer information systems that were being deployed by SDGNE. But another was that we thought that, that this would be kind of an opportunity for lesson, lessons learned. And so now we're approaching with two big members, um, with the most amount of, uh, um, customer accounts. And so, so what, what, what have we learned?
Well, I think what we've done is taken like the questions that most come up, or the, or the, the things that people most misunderstand, and we've been able to address that by maybe readjusting our website or doing an extra push on social media. So we're, we're learning where people have misconceptions, which is priming us for the county and national cities. So I'm really excited about that, because we'll be able to anticipate what, what people might get stuck on a little bit more. I think, like, off the top of my head, the, the first question was, that was confusing to people, is if they had solar, how to attack, why should I enroll, when am I enrolled? That was, and, and it wasn't just Encinitas too, but I think, um, so we'll really want to make that clear. And I think too is, um, for the county and national city, the hardest, or the, the largest challenge was just getting our name out and getting people to understand. So at least we'll already have built that base. So, um, I feel really good about, and, and I, I'm also excited that it will be one enrollment. I think we'll, we'll be able to put more resources towards it.
Alright, perfect. I'll come down to Chula Vista and San Diego, help out too.
We'll meet the farmer's market next Wednesday.
Awesome, any public comments, Megan?
Uh, there are no hand raises at this time, and there is more written comments.
Alright, if there are no more comments or questions by my teleboard members, then we'll say thank you, and we'll receive and file this, um, this item. And if, thank you, and I think you're up next too.
I am.
So, uh, next on our agenda is approval of Second Amendment to Civilian contract for marketing and communication services presented by Rita De La Fuente.
Yes, please, I'm here to present the staff's recommendation, um, to increase our contract with our PR agency, Civilian, to not, to exceed amount of two million dollars and extend the contract through fiscal year twenty-four. Um, next slide, please. So in July twenty-twenty, Civilian's contract was approved by the board after, um, an in-depth search, uh, for a PR and marketing firm to support San Diego community power. These are the, uh, scope of services, that these are the, um, task areas that, that we went out to define support for, so it's pretty broad. Next slide, please, just a little bit of history, oh, did we skip one slide? I, I can speak to it. So as a reminder, the, the board, uh, accepted a, or approved a contract, that was two years for seven hundred and seventy-five thousand in July of twenty-twenty. Then we came back to the board in May of twenty-twenty-one and increased that not-to-exceed amount by a hundred and forty-three thousand dollars, to bring us where we are today. We expect our marketing spend to actually go down in the coming months and years, um, because that initial launch of our brand was the most expensive part, because we were working from scratch, now we have a well-established, um, brand. We're also, um, expanding our internal team, so we're, we'll be moving a lot of those services, um, in-house. Next slide, oh, actually, stay on this slide, I just wanted to show some brief examples of the work that Civilian has done. We've been very, very impressed with their creativity, they, they've got a very talented team. So I'm just going to go through some brief examples of, of areas that we've worked with them on, next slide, please. So from our, uh, launch for the municipal enrollment, when we were just telling the world who we are, next slide, please. To the various social media campaigns, including our, the announcement of our launches, our My Reasons campaign for residential enrollment, and, um, the announcement of our Power One Hundred partners, next slide, please. They also took, um, these enrollment notices that were heavily regulated and managed to keep our, our brand intact and powerful, which was a huge heavy lift, next slide, please. And they have an excellent relationship with our, um, local media. We're very, very pleased with, um, the attention that we brought from the media, and, and as I mentioned before, they, they've been, very, very fair, in my opinion. Next slide. So this just brings us to the approval that staff recommends. This would, um, increase the current contract to one million eighty, or increase it by one million eighty thousand dollars, to a new total of, that's the amount of two million dollars through fiscal year twenty-four. So of that one million eighty thousand increase, hundred and eighty thousand is intended to get us through this current fiscal year, and then the remaining nine hundred thousand is expected to cover us for the next two fiscal years. And it is included in our upcoming budgets. And with that, I have a member from Civilian here, if anyone has any questions, or I'm happy to take any questions.
Alright, any questions for Rita or, um, Civilian? Yes.
Hi, and I answered through the briefing, but is this potentially something that could be brought in-house? Again, we, we want to build up that comment. What is our, our plans if we are to terminate, you know, to bring in the services in-house? Do we have an opt-out clause with this?
Well, this one, this, this contract has a term, so it's, it's for one year, so we're.
For, this would extend it for two years.
For two years.
Right, so we're, I, it's my understanding that we don't have an obligation to spend all of that not-to-exceed amount. Um, and as we do grow the team, we do hope to bring services in-house.
Yeah, and I would just say that, you know, we never want to spend that up to nine hundred, but when we know what our budget is, and we just go all the way there, and I would just say that just we, we have to be very cautious and, you know, let's keep the money in-house if we, if we can, and develop our, our team.
And if I may, all the standard professional service agreements have a termination for convenience clause.
Okay.
It might be thirty days here, um, uh, I just have the moment in front of me, but they all have, uh, an ability to terminate services, the board, pretty much with anyone, uh, can terminate those services.
Okay.
Did you want to, Cody or, or Rita, did you want to talk to what, uh, maybe, uh, some high-level, what our thoughts are in terms of some of the, the kind of, um, parts and elements of the contract that, that we may look to kind of bring in-house in the future?
I, I could, yeah, so, um, we've already, um, since the inception of the contract, have been able to bring some things in-house, I've taken a lot of the engagement on, um, through my role. We have just hired a new marketing communications manager, so, um, she'll take on a lot of, um, the, the, the marketing side. We just don't want to lose that momentum of keeping the consistency of our brand and our messaging that Civilian spends for support.
Yeah, no, I agree, Civilian has been awesome. I mean, from the very beginning with the, with the logo and, and all of the services that they've provided, so it's been a really good contract.
Proposing at least one or two positions in the budget for next year, and that we, we could bring a lot more of this in-house as well, and build our own team, and, you know, transfer the cost, I think it's a great, great solution for you.
Alright, Megan, do we have any?
There are no hand raised and no written comments.
Alright, we'll bring it back to the board, any, uh, further comments or questions?
Look, excellence is expensive, and, you know, I work in the nonprofit space, and, you know, we have a very small staff, and work with PR firms, pro bono. These guys are really good, these guys, I'm sorry, it sucks, they're, they're a very good agency. And, you know, and, and we see the results, right, the impact, and, and more importantly, sustained investment in PR. You know, I think we all, it takes time. One thing I was gonna say is that, you know, and we got to watch the rollout, some of us work very closely with the county on, on the testing and vaccination and evolution of like, all the stuff that went into that, man, there's huge amounts of energy that were consumed by all these, you know, all the elements of campaigns. So, um, I, I, I agree, I think we, we need to have more in-house capacity, but don't underestimate how much value you get, by, you know, working with a good team that seemed to get the market.
Yeah.
I'm gonna say again, the logo Super Bowl, and I think it was our esteemed colleagues on that note, the goal in San Diego is super important, do not underestimate core score, street cred, like, and, and you, the Padres thing, I'm gonna keep saying is genius, but, you know, San Diego Wave, you know, we got the new women's soccer league, you know, and so that's a space, San Diego Gas and Lottery, I'm sure they're listening, that they don't own. They own the community space for sure, you know, it's years of investments in nonprofits, but that's not a bad, that's a, that's an easy win for, for us. And the, the logo just fits right into San Diego, right, so, there you go.
Point well made, no, I think those are really, those are really good comments, I, I think we'll, we'll continue to kind of balance all of the interests, and maybe in the future, you know, there's a little bit more of, of what we're contracting out for.
Absolutely, yeah.
But, but, but these are still excellent services, so.
Some of the items, well.
Alright, so we have a motion on the table, do we have a second? Alright, we have a second by Director Lacava, let's, um, let's vote.
Director Humora, how do you vote?
Aye.
Director Dedina, how do you vote?
Aye.
Director Lacava, how do you vote?
Aye.
Director Lawson Reamer, how do you vote?
Aye.
Director Sotelo Solis, how do you vote?
Sotelo Solis, aye.
Vice Chair Padilla, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair Mosca, how do you vote?
Yes.
Motion carries with all directors voting yes.
Now coming to our last item, and that's approval of the market salary increase for employees and next steps, uh, very comprehensive salary structure, presented by our CEO, Karen Lawson-Burks.
Thank you, thank you, Karen.
Is it just Karen Burks?
It is.
It is.
Oh, I'm sorry.
My name. The the Danish, it means still strong. So a little bit of history. Since the since the founding of San Diego Community Power, the staff had drawn in numbers and they'd really excelled in performance. And even here being in the role for two weeks, I can tell you, they work so well together and they work very hard. They work all hours. It's been really impressive. As we enroll our last batch of customers for twenty twenty-two, we really are financially sound, but we also want to continue to attract talent. So as you're all aware, right now, the labor market is currently employee-driven. And in a field where expertise is critical to our organizational success, we are proposing a market salary increase to ensure continued employee retention and to be able to attract new talent. Aside from a few individual salary adjustments, employees have not received a merit or a COLA adjustment since December of twenty twenty. At the same time, most of our community choice aggregators in California do award an annual salary increase in the form of a merit increase for COLA. So there are two components to this agenda item. The first is a market salary increase of four and a half percent to employee salaries retroactive to be effective of January first, twenty twenty-two, excluding May. Uh this is proposed to be retroactive, starting on the first day of the month that an employee was hired, whichever, or January first, whichever was posted. The second component is taking more complicated comprehensive approach to HR and merit increases, as well as to ensure STCP's salaries and policies are transparent, competitive, and fair. So what we're doing, what we'd like to do is move forward to retain a human resources consultant to conduct a market salary review, assist with a salary structure recommendation, develop strategic policies for performance. Also, review the employee handbook, make recommendations for improvements such as returning Charlie Lee, work flexibility, forms reasons set. The proposed market increase salary adjustment will have an approximate fiscal impact of seventy-five thousand dollars. But in fiscal year twenty. That's what.
Perfect. Um Mr. Washington, if you want to add anything?
Uh the only thing that I would add, Chair, I think our chief executive officer, uh quite up in terms of fiscal impact. So you'll recall back in February, we brought before the board an amended budget in which we were able to actually save a total of eight hundred and sixty-one thousand, particularly in our personnel costs as it related to the timing and sequencing hired uh to staff. So the seventy-five thousand impact approximately for the merit for the uh market adjustment is is absolutely supported just purely from the savings in personnel costs of fiscal year twenty twenty. But then that's all.
All right, thank you. Um I like that the our CEO has already started to kind of, you know, dig in and and start to think about some of the things that that we need to do. This is something that that uh we need to do. Um and more specifically too, not only the the compensation adjustments immediately, but in the future, we need to start thinking about um how do we basically um look at adjustments and reward really excellent uh performance? Um and some of the salary ranges were, you know, they weren't necessarily put together in any kind of comparing to this organization or that organization. It may have been, you know, a few of us around the table um looking at what we thought was market value. And so I think that the time has come to kind of really think about who we should be comparing ourselves to and and what these salary ranges um ought to be, especially in a in the type of market that we find ourselves in with um, you know, with inflation, a tough job job market, um and maybe even hyperinflation going into next year. Uh and so I think that this is something that we we need to do. Any questions, uh Director?
No, I I I just want to echo what you said. I think it's very thoughtful, but also a pre-strategic planning organization development. I think much needed and much appreciated. Um having been, again, nonprofit director in my in my other life besides elected official, we went through the same thing. Highly educated, very professional staff who work in the environmental field. And, you know, we we, you know, we hadn't given them raise because of the pandemic, et cetera, so we just went through this very necessary as well as developing our trust. I just really appreciate it. It's very thoughtful and I think very timely. So I, you know, I'm I'm willing to make a motion, but I'm sure there's other support. I'll I'll make a motion to support it.
All right, so we have a motion on the table. Uh wait, uh uh General Counsel just raised ten. I always like to recognize the General Counsel.
If I may, Chair, I'd like to provide an oral summary required by the Brown Act for this item. Uh the Brown Act requires that uh prior to the adoption of this item, that the legislative body do an oral summary of any uh compensation provided for in the form of fringe benefits to the agency's executives. Uh arguably, the CEO did that in the presentation, but I'd like to go ahead and just do it for the administrative record. Uh consistent with the recommended action, the staff report is proposed that all agency employees, including executive management, but not the chief executive officer, receive a four and a half percent salary increase retroactive to January first, two thousand twenty-two, or the first day of the month on which the employee was hired. No other salary or benefits compensation is being proposed. That concludes the summary in that satisfies the Brown Act.
All right, and before we, I entertain a motion too, let me just go to one more public comment and then also uh a board member comment and then public comments, just in case there are people.
Uh I surely wanted to comment. Um first of all, thanking the really amazing staff, like you guys do incredible work and well, um I'm just really honored to be able to help you all. Uh you've been doing all the hard work and I'm just really excited to be on this team now. Um so I just think you guys are doing an amazing job. And I also strongly support your move to retain an external human resources firm to do a comprehensive review. Um so we can really systematize and professionalize our our compensation structure. Um and ensure that uh you know, folks who are working hard are being treated fairly and that we remain competitive and we can recruit and retain uh great, great folks to lead San Diego Community Power.
Just real quick, I'll echo the comments. She took the applause, but if we want to applause again. You know, when I first heard about this and was an advocate for this, no idea that we'd be able to ramp up so fast. It's amazing work that you've all done. Uh so thank you for that. Um I also see this as part of the maturing of the organization from a brash startup to kind of an ongoing. You got a lot of startup work still to do. Uh so thank you for that. Certainly going to be supportive. Um one question, how quickly do you think we would be able to move to get an outside consultant? Get recommendations so we can start looking towards what we need to do?
We have put each of them worked together already and we had our first interview earlier today. So we have about two more to go and then hopefully decide some hopefully.
Do they give you an indication of turnaround time and be able to give you meaningful data?
Uh they did. You know, what we're planning on is prioritizing certain things, certain enablers, uh certain policies that we really need in place immediately. And then hopefully want to hear them at this episode.
Great, thank you. Perfect. Megan, do we have any public comments?
Yeah, we have one hand raised. Curtis, you should be able to unmute yourself and you'll have three minutes.
Uh me again, and I just like everyone at the table to understand uh that there was an article in the L.A. Times within the last couple of days that thirty percent of uh utility rate payers are late on their bills in California. That is a frightening prospect. And one of the reasons I'm interested in knowing more about why people are opting in is to foresee what we could say to those people if they start getting nervous and stop paying their bill. Uh so the granularity in which you are going to um talk to people who've opted in, I think is very important. And then I'd like to know the name of the lady in blue that
I am our representative from the County Board of Supervisors. Um so I represent District Three for San Diego County. I'm Tara Lawson Reamer.
Okay, uh thank you very much.
All right, any other public comments?
No, that was the only hand raised and there's no raised comments. Oh, sorry, someone just raised their hand.
Right.
Richard, you should be able to unmute yourself and you'll have three minutes.
Hey, thank you. I'm just building on Curtis's comment. And uh number one, this is my first time attending one of your meetings and I'm very, very impressed with the enthusiasm. And I very much support the goals. Uh but relative to Curtis's comment and the fact that other community power organizations have uh had to close their doors. Uh and I don't understand fully how you work, but what is the liability of thirty percent of the rate payers not being able to pay for the power which you've purchased on their behalf?
Is that, is that all of your public comment?
Yes, that's that's it.
All right.
I think sure, I mean, maybe I'm not paying attention, but we're we're not on general comment and it's common to be addressed to the item we're talking about. And I think just trying to make general comment on the item you just before. I'm I'm respectfully suggesting with the speaker with thanks that he's out of order.
Oh, yeah, but it's it's always easier just to take somebody's comment, but uh
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I'm just concerned that you stray too far for that too often and, you know, like the ten speakers, we have four people on that.
Yeah, all right. Sure. Perfect. Um Megan, do we have any other public comments?
That was sudden. There's no more hand raised.
All right, well, thank you to the speakers and we'll bring it back to the board. So we have this item before. Any other thoughts or questions? Um so we're gonna get the uh survey, uh we're gonna have the uh salary survey, we're gonna launch that. Is our HR person gonna do that or are we gonna hire a third party to do that?
We may have an interim, so an interim and then go follow-up for study.
Right.
So we're we're working through those specific.
Either way, we'll have it back as a kind of a discussion item so we can kind of decide how.
Yes, yes.
Perfect.
Yes.
Any questions to this item? I think uh Director Dedina, you're gonna make a motion. So you have a motion on the table? Oh, we have a motion on the table. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, so we have a motion and a second on this item.
Director Humora, how do you vote?
Aye.
Director Dedina, how do you vote?
Aye.
Director Lacava, how do you vote?
Aye.
Director Lawson Reamer, how do you vote?
Aye.
Director Sotelo Solis, how do you vote?
Sotelo Solis, aye.
Vice Chair Padilla, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair Mosca, how do you vote?
Yes.
Motion carries with all the directors voting yes.
All right, thank you. And so we're at the end of our agenda, the regular agenda, so um we're gonna move to reports by our uh CEO.
So, uh yes, I think we've gone through all of our regular updates and I just wanted to use this time to say hello again as your new chief executive of San Diego Community Power. I've been in the old nine business state. I've been drinking from a massive fire hose, but I'm still alive. So that's good. Um I really, I can't tell you how excited I am to have joined this organization. We have an exceptional, talented, passionate team. We are working on a very important mission and we are going to have a very positive impact on our team. My values cannot be more personally aligned with the team, our mission, and our desired community of us. I'm also so thankful for the incredibly warm welcome that I have received. I'm grateful to the board, to the entire staff, to the CAC, and the outgoing interim CEO for all the support they have been providing me during this transition. We have a lot of exciting work to do and we're already part of it. You'll be hearing more from me and the team and seeing more of me in the weeks and months to come. And we'll be sharing exciting new initiatives as we roll out. Since of the next ninety days, they'll be very busy. Uh first, getting our house in order, building up our internal foundation and systems and policies as we further solidify our organizational structure, enroll customers, bring on new colleagues, build reserves, purchase power, and manage risk. All at the same time getting ready to scale. That's I know. Uh I know too. I've been listening and learning from staff, the board, the CAC, as well as our civic and industry partners to seek advice, get ideas, and search for areas of future collaboration via what I called during my interview process a listening port. So that I already started and it's going really well and really excited to continue that process. And then lastly, working with the board, the staff, and the CAC to develop our strategic plan and our community power goals, which will go hand in hand to actualize our mission, our vision, our values, and our goals. Uh so those are the priorities over the first ninety days. And I want to thank everyone again who has been involved in this process. I'm so excited to be here. And I'm confident in STCP, but this team is poised to have a truly remarkable impact on the day energy transition and inner case. So thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Karen? General Counsel.
I have no comments.
No report? Assistant General Counsel?
Nothing.
All right, nothing to report. All right, uh director comments?
Just excited, Mr. Chair.
Excited, very excited.
Excited.
Perfect. All right, so we're gonna adjourn this.
I got one. And I want to give shout out to to Bill Carnahan. I know we're gonna have, go to the party, but uh so it's on the record. I thank you, Bill, for, you know, helping to move the ball. Now we've, Karen is real excited. That's up to the team. Let's do this.
Awesome.
That was it.
All right, so but don't move because we we have a special meeting as well. All right, so I'm gonna
I'm gonna have to leave, so I have to call it, so I can't stick around for the special meeting. So I want to say welcome to Karen. We had a one-on-one this morning. It was a really terrific conversation. I didn't have the hospitality of nature of being a mayor, Dedina, but uh I was very excited about the conversation we have. And I'm sorry, I can't stick around, Bill. Thank you for your service. So uh please eat a lot of food and drink a lot.
Be mayor in your city.
That's right, that's right.
All right, any other director comments? If not, I'm gonna adjourn the the regular, regular meeting of the San Diego Community Power Board of Directors. And um and we're gonna basically go right into a special uh meeting of the Board of Directors for San Diego Community Power. Um and that was agendized as a special meeting. Um and we have one item on the special meeting agenda. And since, correct me if I'm wrong, since we've already take up, you know what, we have one board member leave, so do you want to take a roll call?
You can do roll call or you can just note for the record that all the directors are present except for um council member.
I'll note what the General Counsel just said um about the attendance. And we have one item on our agenda and that's a special meeting agenda for an employee child here during attendance at certain meetings or events on behalf of STCP presented by General Counsel.
Thank you. I've been on leave, permanently leave for six weeks with the birth of my fourth child, so I'm happy and did not know that Nick was gonna be here tonight, so I will turn it over to Nick. Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan, and thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening, board members. Uh so at the February board meeting, the board adopted a board compensation and reimbursement policy that provides a premium compensation and then reimbursement for certain expenses when attending certain uh outside events occurrences. Um one of the questions that we received from the board was, there's an upcoming strategic planning meeting that's all day on Saturday. We received questions from the board about whether um the the policy covered reimbursement of the childcare expenses during an event um that takes place on a Saturday um uh outside of normal business hours. Uh and looking at the policy, that's not something that was covered. It wasn't one of the types of events that was covered. Um so what's proposed before you this evening is an amendment to the board compensation and reimbursement policy that would authorize the directors to receive reimbursement for reasonable childcare expenses um for attending uh board of directors meetings other than regularly scheduled board meetings. Um I also want to note that because the need to attend special meetings can sometimes arise at the last minute, uh the uh reimbursement for those would not be required to be pre-authorized by the board. Typically, for a lot of um other types of reimbursements, let's say for attending conferences, those are items that require uh pre-authorization under the policy, uh it wouldn't be required for this type of item. As long as it's uh an expense that falls within uh the policy. So under the proposed amendment, the reimbursement rate for childcare expenses would be uh uh limited to twenty dollars per hour um for the length of the meeting. And then similar to other reimbursements, the director would also be required to submit a claim form and supporting documentation regarding the expenditure. And then I also want to note, um so there's a a proposed resolution that would adopt that change to the policy. As part of the resolution as well, uh it would uh authorize the chief executive officer to establish a program uh for childcare uh and or a reimbursement of expenses for childcare for at the employee level. Um to basically take a look at that, um it would be up to the um the chief executive officer to implement that program and determine how it would work and potentially put that into the employee handbook, but it would authorize the chief executive officer to take that action as well with the idea for events uh like the strategic planning meeting that it might be used. So I'm happy to answer any questions. Um and sorry, before I do that, um to the extent that this affects uh the uh compensation of executive-level employees, I want to note that it also provides a for, the this summary that I provided is satisfies the Brown Act requirement uh for a verbal summary on executives.
So this was responsive to a couple of board members that raised it a couple, uh a meeting or so ago. And so I want to thank staff for bringing this back so quickly. Uh I did actually mention this to staff in City of San Diego's. Um and they're actually inspired by this and want to get a copy of the policy.
Uh, I did actually mention this to staff in City of San Diego, um, and they're actually inspired by this and want to get a copy of the policy, um, because, uh, they haven't been able to find anything like this, and so, again, we are leading it in an area that I think that is so important, uh, for us to lead it, so, um, you have a comment, Director Sotelo Solis?
Yeah, this is gonna, um, I, we just had the conversation about an HR director, oh, and then HR kind of big holistic look at it. So, as much as I would want to move forward a policy right now that would allow for some type of reimbursement, because to me, it seems kind of carte blanche if we don't have how it's going to affect the entire organization. Because if we say, oh, board members are gonna get this, and, and yes, employees as well, but we don't know the greater impact. Um, I would be a little hesitant, um, do we have a cap, what does that look like, is it twenty-five dollars an hour, is it a hundred, twenty-five dollars an hour? Are we looking at, so.
Sorry, can I, I apologize for, if I didn't know that, that it would be capped for employees at all, it's twenty dollars an hour?
Twenty dollars.
If there's a reimbursement established, it would be the same as for board members.
Those twenty dollars, huh? Okay, well, it's still the HR components, more process, um, kind of where we are policy-wise. I'm supportive of this effort, but I just feel if we're gonna start doing this, then we're gonna start feeling a lot of other things, but what about this? What about, you know, other elements, so I would be hesitant to move forward on the resolution.
So the, so the, the resolution that's before you is, is with regard to board members, uh, for meetings outside of, um,
Yeah.
the regular meeting, and then directing the CEO to come up with a policy for employees, and so we'll still have another opportunity to look at that policy for employees, uh, in the future as well. Director?
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I actually, this is fantastic, I think, you know, setting, um, a role model and example around, uh, childcare, but I also think, um, Director Solis has a, has a useful point, maybe we can have a slight amendment to this, which is everything as is, uh, but sort of an additional sense saying, um, at, once a HR person is onboarded, uh, they will take a holistic look at all of our policies, including a childcare policy, so this is, we can acknowledge that this is temporary, um, and a good signal, um, in terms of the direction we're going, but that, uh, we are expecting the HR, uh, review to include this and we will be quite comfortable with the change that might occur based on that, that holistic review. Would that address some of your concerns about ensuring that this is part of a, a holistic HR approach?
Yeah.
That I would be very supportive of that, if that amendment would be, uh, meanable.
I can insert something.
Okay.
Great.
If I could just add, that is the intent, that this would then be wrapped into that whole, would not be done separately.
But I think, just so. Good to be clear, yes. But as the board members who are constantly looked at and whether or not, you know, these are the, yes.
Right, right, all right, um, so good suggestion, and.
Well, no, just, uh, the same appropriate generally review salary, I don't know, it's a union negotiations, at least the first iteration, it's the salary, staff salaries done in closed session. Something like this would be on open session, so I'm not clear why we're doing it in closed session, yes.
Oh, this is in closed session?
Oh, I'm sorry, oh, good, okay, I.
Just a special meeting because it was added to the agenda last second, so.
We're still on it.
I get it.
You're on camera, sweetie.
No, I, I don't know what's on.
I know, right? We're always on.
So, yeah, we're just focusing on those, um, acceptable, allowable expenses, uh, for board members and in the future for employees. Um, any other questions? Does La Mason have this?
No, we don't.
Are you gonna bring it back to the seat, La Mason? Megan's like, wait.
We're gonna include dogs.
Megan, try to get down.
Bring your thoughts to work, obviously.
Megan, do we have any other comments?
I gotta get to my turn, I'm not all these group chats.
We have no, uh, hand raised and there's no ready comments.
All right, we'll bring it back to the board, uh, if there are no other comments or questions, we'll, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll have you make the motion with the amendment, yeah.
All right, we have a, a motion and a second, let's vote.
Director Humora, how do you vote?
Aye.
Director Dedina, how do you vote?
Dedina, aye.
Director Lacava, how do you vote? Director Lawson Reamer, how do you vote?
Aye.
Director Sotelo, Sotelo Solis, how do you vote?
Sotelo Solis, aye.
Vice Chair Padilla, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair Mosca, how do you vote?
Yes.
Motion carries with all directors voting yes.
All right, if there's nothing else before this board, we are adjourned, thank you so much, guys.
Sorry.
Oh, my God.
All right. Jose, you can stop recording, so.